I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. It's just now six o'clock. Thank you all for coming. At this time, if we can rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
Of the United States of America. To the right.
How will one judge stand?
Under God and of this.
We do have two board members joining us virtually, so we may pause a little bit to make sure their voices are heard. But at this time, may we have a roll call, please?
Stacy Gillian.
Present.
Rick Berger.
Present.
Christina Chris.
Present.
Amy Lor.
Present.
Present.
Mary Labella.
Present.
Ken Warner.
Present.
James Skelton.
Present.
Present.
Thank you all for joining us. We have a nice front load of our meeting this evening with students here this evening. So I'd like to call up our Vigo County Fair Queen, Princesses in Court, to come on up here to the table. We have royalty in our presence, and what is wonderful about these young ladies is that they are all either current Vigo County School Corporation students or former students. So if you all would just take a moment to introduce yourselves, maybe tell us what year you graduated or what year you currently are, and anything about your experience you'd like to share.
Hi, my name's Chloe Guevara. I'm the 2025 Miss Vigo County Fair Queen, and I'm a 2024 graduate at West Vigo High School, so it's been a little bit since I graduated, which kind of makes me sick, but it's fine. So I am currently a sophomore at Indiana State University studying in elementary education. I've always wanted to be an educator, so being able to stay in my community has meant so much to me. And I'm currently at Devaney Elementary in a kindergarten classroom, and I absolutely love it. And with this program, I have learned so many valuable skills, including leadership, interview skills that I never would have had without this opportunity. So I just say, take a chance. You never know what could happen. I never thought I would be sitting here in front of all of you today. So just take a chance, and yeah, this is my princess Jessa.
Hi, I'm Jessa Vark, the 2025 Vigo County Fair Princess. I graduate from West Vigo High School in 2027, so I'm a current junior. When I grow up, I hope to be a high school ag teacher. I adore my ag teacher right now, and he's inspired me to want to be an ag teacher, to share my love for all that Vigo County has gave for me from the 4H and FFA program. I show dairy goats, meat goats, sheep, and dairy cattle through 4H, and I do photography and floriculture. And the Pageant Program has blessed me with all these good friends, even though I've known almost all of them my whole life. But, um, and they teach you so many valuable life skills, like interview, public speaking, which is scary. And just how to be a good person and show that to everyone. And they teach you everything. They bring in hairstylists, makeup artists, professors that teach you speech, and our directors are so amazing, and they just give us all the opportunities to be our best on stage and show who we are and what we've learned.
Wonderful. You can move the microphone around if it's more comfortable for you, so you don't have to, like, lean over.
Hi, everyone. My name is Maggie Setliff. I am Miss Vigo County Fair Queen, first runner-up. I graduated from Terre Haute North in 2024. I am currently attending Indiana State University. I am majoring in Applied Medicine with aspirations to become a physician's assistant, and I will soon start, I will soon start a minor in massage therapy. I'm currently working at the Terre Haute Boys and Girls Club, so I take a lot of value in how we can impact the futures of our youth, because, you know, one day, the students at our schools now will be the ones who sit in these seats. So it's really awesome that I've been able to come into the community, especially in this way, and what this program has given me. Similar to all of us, this program has taught me so many skills that I never would have thought that I could have ever possessed, you know, such as, you know, speaking in front of all of you, sharing my love for, you know, our program and the future of our children. And I think it's really awesome that, you know, this program has given me something so powerful. So I really appreciate everyone being here today.
Hello, everyone. I'm Aubrey Dean. I'm your Miss Vigo County Fair Princess, first runner-up. I'm a junior at West Vigo right now, so I'll graduate the same as Jessa in 2027. When I grew up, I've always wanted to be a teacher, and it's always inspired me throughout my years. I've never had a bad teacher. I've never had a bad experience, and I just want to keep that going so that kids love to go to school, because some kids don't like going to school, and I want it to be like a homey environment. This pageant is like so amazing. I just want everyone to just, you know, take that step in chance, because it teaches you a lot of confidence, a lot of public speaking, like they said. There is always help. They will help you through everything, and don't be afraid. And I also just want to point out, I'm also the People's Choice winner, and with Christina here, we always support some type of local organization, and we've done Team of Mercy for the last two years. And it's just such an amazing organization and such an amazing chance to be able to raise money for such a powerful place. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ann Curran. I'm currently your 2025 Miss Vigo County Princess, second runner-up. I'm currently a freshman at Terre Haute South, so I'll graduate in 2029. With this pageant, I would not be standing up here. I would never have the confidence to speak publicly and just get in front of everybody. And with that, I just feel like every girl needs like a chance to step out of her comfort zone and be here with all you guys right now. Thank you.
And I believe we have a video that we'd like to share from, let me find her, hold on. Isabel McClosick, did I say that correctly? And she is currently at Hanover, but was a 2024 graduate from Vigo County. So we'll turn to the screens and listen to that message.
Hello, everyone. My name is Izzy McClosick, and I'm coming to you from Hanover College. I spent 10 years in 4H, showing pigs, doing projects in the Exhibit Hall, and spending time in the Junior Leaders Building. And all of those experiences helped me become a more hardworking and well-rounded individual. And now I love coming back to the fairgrounds to see how all of these young 4Hers have put all of their hard work into their projects and making the best better. Thank you all for listening, and have fun at the fair next year.
That's wonderful. Um, how, just a question, we'll open it up to the board to ask you questions as well. But how does one, if they're watching this, get involved, one, in 4H, but two, to be a fair queen or a princess?
Yeah, so the process with 4H, a lot of people think it's just livestock, but there are endless opportunities with 4H. You can be involved in the Exhibit Hall, or Northside Neighbors, or Riley Club. And so there are several different ways to get involved. We have registration. The link is open now. So you can follow the 4H Facebook and join that way. And there are several people in the community that will help you reach out to any one of us, and we could say how 4H has impacted our lives. I was a 10-year 4H member. And so having this title is kind of like my bonus year, as I've been calling it, so I'm basically like an 11-year 4H member. But it's been so special. And to get involved in the program, my sister was 2018 Miss Vigo County Fair Queen, and so I've always looked up to her. She's my role model, always and forever. And I took a chance. The shy little girl that started this like a few years ago, absolutely no way I would be the person that I am right now without this program, and I know every single one of us can attest to that. So Jessa, if you want to add some more to that, or if not, you're good.
I would definitely say try. Try 4H. There's literally something for everyone, from welding, flowers, photography, rockets. We have a rocket launch. You can show a cat, like, hamsters, anything. I promise. So I would definitely, whatever you're interested in, look it up, and there is a club or a thing for you, I promise. So look it up.
So it's, it's my understanding that you, as the, the fair court, you are available for presentations or to come and speak, and we are one of your first stops on your speaking tour. Is that correct?
Yeah, so we can do pretty much anything in the community. We've done a lot of parades. I was in the ISU Homecoming Parade not too long ago with Maggie, and we just kind of want to do everything that we can. I'm currently in a classroom, so I've been like in classrooms and speaking to students, and they always think it's crazy that I'm a queen. Like, I'll be like, well, I'm the fair queen. They're like, well, where's your crown or your castle? I was like, I don't have one of those, but I wish I did.
You should always carry it with you. You should always have it like in a bag and be up here.
Yes, that's what they expect. And one time, like, I came to class, and it was like a random day, and this little boy was like, where's your crown? I was like, I'll bring it next time. Sorry.
Are there any other questions?
Well, I'd like to say I was a 4H member for 10 years, and I'm really proud of you, but more proud to set up here and represent you on School Corporation, too. We have so many great students that are, let me ask you one question. We need help with our schools? Are they wore out? Okay, just asking. All right.
Were any of you junior leaders?
I did it for a year. I know that.
I am.
You have.
Well, I was a junior leader, and my wife was a princess for the fair, so we were long-term 4Hers, too. Corn, cows, tractors, and horses. So very proud of you.
My first public speaking was also at 4H.
Well, I love that you are here advocating for other young women to get involved, but also just the confidence you have this evening. Be proud of that, and thank you for coming to speak with us, and we're going to put you on display just a little bit longer and ask for you to join us up here at front for a quick photo for our social media, and hopefully that will get you some, maybe you could use that in advocating for more speaking engagements, so you can go out there and talk, but thank you for being representing young women here in Vigo County.
Wherever you.
Let's applaud them.
Go ahead.
Okay. Next, we're going to hear from our Terre Haute North student, Hudson Jackson. Hudson, if you'd like to come up here to the table and join us, I'll read a little bit. It says Hudson was selected as one of only 13 youth members across the entire state of Indiana to represent Indiana in the State 4H Dairy Academy. Is that correct? As part of this opportunity, Hudson attended the National 4H Dairy Conference in Madison, Wisconsin last month. So he's here to share a little bit about that. Welcome.
And you can move the mic wherever you need it.
Oh, it's my first time, so just bear with me.
Yep, just pull it in front of you if you want, so our online group can hear you.
Good evening, members of the Vigo County School Corporation Board, teachers, and guests. My name is Hudson Jackson, and I am a sophomore at Terre Haute North Vigo High School. Thank you for inviting me to share about an amazing opportunity I had as being selected as a delegate of the 2025 Indiana 4H Dairy Youth Academy. Only 13 students from across the state were chosen this year, and I am honored to have been chosen to represent Terre Haute North and this community. The academy, the academy is a statewide program for students in grades 10 through 12 who want to learn more about the dairy industry and careers in agriculture. At Terre Haute North, I am part of both the welding techno- technology and agricultural career pathway. Last year, I earned nine dual credits, and I am on track to earn 15 more this year. These programs have given me hands-on experience that connect what I am learning in school to real careers outside of class. My brother and I raise and sell livestock. I am an eight-year member of the Vigo County 4H and two-year member of FFA at Terre Haute North. I'm also on the football, wrestling, and bass fishing team at North. Through these opportunities, I have learned teamwork, discipline, and importance of hard work skills that help me in everything I do. The Indiana 4H Dairy Youth Academy is a year-long opportunity that focuses on hands-on workshops in veterinary science, dairy nutrition, and production management. Our schedule includes several major events, leadership, careers, resumes, and industry workshops and tours. Multi-state dairy tours, state quiz bowl, and academy graduation at the 2026 Indiana State Fair. Most recently, I was able to attend the National Dairy 4H Youth Conference in Madison, Wisconsin, where I met delegates and industry experts from across America and parts of Canada. These experiences have allowed me to network with industry professionals, visit innovative farms, and see how technology and businesses work together in modern agriculture. One of the academy's main goals is to develop leadership and communication skills with the other delegates we, we work in. Teams to solve real problems, like finding efficient ways to feed herds or make farms more suitable. For me, this program is also helping me become more confident speaking in front of others, including, right now, I'm learning to work better as part of a team. I am also working on improving my poke speaking skills, because as I've learned, talking to a herd of cattle does not count, really. The academy brings together everything I love, animals, science, and agriculture, while showing me the the dairy industry offers many different careers, from animal health and genetics to technology, nutrition, and business management. Another great part is meeting students from all over Indiana and the country who share the same passion for agriculture. We've already started building friendships and connections that I've known, I know will last well beyond the program. Best part of Indiana 4H Dairy Youth Academy has helped me understand how much time, care, and science goes into production as simple as a gallon of milk. It's given me a real appreciation for the people who dedicate their lives to agriculture. I am thankful, I am thankful to the American Dairy Association of Indiana, Indiana Dairy Production, producers, Purdue University Extension, and especially Jeff Pell and the Dairy Youth Activities Committee, my family, teachers, coaches, and the School Corporation for supporting, like, supporting students like me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hudson.
So a question I have, are you worried, you say you're a sophomore now?
Yeah.
What's your plans after school?
Um, I have a lot, but I've thought about working for, doing the hydraulic business.
Yeah, okay. So you're from a farm background, I assume, maybe?
Kind of. My dad works a lot, so I'm getting, I get exposed to a lot of stuff like that.
Good, good. You did great.
Thank you.
Public speaking.
Yes, you got it. Yeah.
Good.
I think you did an excellent job. I will tell you right now, I get nervous and tongue-tied every meeting, so don't, don't write yourself off that, that you, you can do this, and the nerves, they don't go away as you get older. But I think this is wonderful. I mean, do you see, so this is a year-long program, and you'll be recognized next year at State Fair? Is that correct, or?
Uh, I think so.
Yeah? Well, what's next with this academy? Well, like, I know you just recently were at a convention in Wisconsin, but what's the next thing you'll do?
Um, we're going to Ferrocks Farm, December 5th, 5th to the 7th, and we're just learning about their production.
Is that the large dairy up north?
Yeah.
Yeah, the turntable, basically? Yeah, okay.
Are there any other questions? Well, thank you, Hudson, for sharing with us. I hope you come back, maybe at a later date, and share again, maybe after the conclusion of the program, but almost done.
Yeah, we gotta get a photo.
We need a photo, sir.
All right.
Okay. Just a housekeeping announcement. If board members can use their microphones, our, our, our online board members can't understand us. Um, next up is our South High School Culinary Students and Teachers, Steve Dalton. Is that correct?
Melissa's here.
Oh, Melissa.
Melissa's here.
Okay, Melissa, thank you for being here this evening. Um, this spotlight, our students from the Terre Haute South and culinary, the Terre Haute South and their culinary club are teaching class. They were asked to participate in the annual Optimus Chili Cook-Off earlier this year, and the students entered the contest, and the group was awarded third place as event favorite. So do you want to share a little bit about that experience?
I was not directly involved with the chili cook-off. I kind of just made the chili with my partner, and then the other students went out and, like, did the cook-off. I wasn't directly involved with it because I was busy with the band.
You were with the band.
Yes. So you're, you're here for two reasons tonight.
Okay. So the students, though, each, well, Mr. Dalton has two classes, and each of the labs created their chili, and then collectively, that chili is what went to the cook-off and won third place. So it was actually all students involved, so it wasn't any one individual student. It was, it was all, I think, 40 of them that participated in the chili cook-off technically with a couple of students that went and served.
And I think officially, we have an Optimus member that's going to present.
So our board member, Mr. Ken Warner, he's also a member of the Optimus Group, and would like to award you with your third-place win.
The Optimus Club loved you so much, and I will tell you, a couple other people go, were saying, we can never win if they have kids here. So what we have decided to do at the Optimus Club is for next year, we're going to weigh the fee for 20 student groups to participate, and each one will get a donation from the club also.
Thank you. We can do it up here, like, we can just do it with the photo.
That's amazing. Thank you.
Any other questions before we do the photo?
Any other questions?
So, do you want to?
Making the chili, yeah. I, I like cooking, so.
Did you try it beforehand?
Yes, duh.
So you, you're not surprised. Maybe next year, first place, then?
I think they got, they got a Santa Claus. The Santa Claus group. That's a tough competition.
Tough competition, for sure. All right, we'll go, we'll do the photo. Thank you. Well, thank you all for coming. I know some of our student groups that are here, at this time, if you have other things to do this evening, you are free to go. We're going to get ready to start our official business meeting. Band students, you're, you're stuck with us a little bit longer, so thank you for coming and being patient.
You know, for those of you slaving, thank you for representing our school. Thank you.
Oh, thank you all. At this time, it's first call for citizen comments on agenda items only, and seeing none on agenda items. I'll give a moment to see if anyone would like to sign up on something about our, on our agenda. Okay, if not, we're moving on to our consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent in Jenna, as presented.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Skelton?
Aye.
Sorry, I, any opposed?
Or abstain?
Thank you. Moving on to our new business, the Personnel Report and Professional Leave Request, Mr. Michael Cox.
Good evening. Administration seeks approval of Personnel and Professional Leave Report as presented this evening.
I'll make a motion to approve the Personnel Report and Professional Leave Request as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for the Personnel Report and Professional Leave Request. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 JD, I'm sorry. I, I don't, I don't want to miss you. Are you, did you say aye at the same time?
Yes, aye.
I'm sorry. Oh, they're talking at the same time. Got you. Any abstentions? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our November Accounts Payable Docket. Oh, Mrs. Donna Wilson.
Good evening. The Board Finance Committee met last Thursday evening, excuse me, to discuss the Accounts Payable Docket that's included in your board packet this evening. Several claims were pulled for further review. BioCorporation, $2,364.97. That was for specimens for biology class at Terre Haute North Vigo High School, and that was paid from Terre Haute North Vigo High School's classroom supplies budget. NCS Pearson, $1,523.20. That was testing materials for six elementary schools. Davis Park Consolidated, Terrytown, Sugar Grove, Hoosier Prairie, and Riley. And that was also paid from individual school supply budgets. Choices Consulting Center, $900. That was life skills and job readiness consulting fees for activities at the Juvenile Justice Center, and that was paid from Title I Part D grant funds. Metal Fab Inc., $37,906.75. That was equipment for machining class at West Vigo High School, and that was paid from Perkins Grant Funds. National Restaurant, $16,510.44. That's textbooks for the culinary arts classes at Terre Haute North, Terre Haute South, and West Vigo High Schools. And that's paid from the textbook funds that are now embedded and part of the Education Fund. Communications Technologies, $57,291.10. That was for three additional portable metal detectors with accessories, and that, that was paid from the Homeland Security Grant. And finally, Energy Harness Corporation. And finally, Energy Harness Corporation, eighteen thousand six hundred and sixty-nine oh eight. And that was conversion to the proper LED gym lighting fixtures at the West Vigo High School Green Dome. And that was paid from the Operations Fund Building Improvement Budget. I'd be happy to any, answer any other questions that you may have. And we ask for the approval of the docket this evening.
Make a motion to approve the November Accounts Payable Docket.
I second.
We have a motion in two seconds to approve the November Accounts Payable Docket. Are there any questions or comments from board members?
I'll just do our reminder that the Finance Committee is public. And you are all welcome to attend. It's usually the Thursday before tonight's meeting. Um, and it's always a good time, we get to go through some bills, so.
I was able to sub in at this last meeting and it's always very informative and Donna and her team are always ready and have, they have all the information in front of us to pull and then the email is sent out to the entire board members of, of anything pulled. And we always appreciate your thorough, transparent process you give to us, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donna.
We do have a motion and a second, two seconds, to approve the November Accounts Payable Docket. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, JD.
Good job, team. Any opposed? Or abstain? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, new courses of study for secondary, Dr. Jennifer Corkus, welcome this evening.
Good evening, President Killian, Superintendent Dr. Hemzal, and members of the board. I'm here this evening to request the addition of six additional courses to our secondary course of study for the coming school year. The courses before you are technical math, technical communication, AP cyber networking, AP cybersecurity, life science, and digital media. Our intent with these additions is to provide students with relevant career-aligned learning experiences while maintaining strong academic rigor. We're looking to diversify our course offerings to ensure alignment to the new diploma program. These courses are designed to support both our students that are college and career-bound as well as meet the needs of our diverse student population and prepare our learners for rapidly evolving workforce. At this time, if you have any questions I can answer regarding the courses, I would be happy to. I have prepared, prepared for you a course description packet that you have in front of you regarding all six of these courses.
Before questions and comments, do we have a motion and a second to open?
I'll make a motion to approve the new courses of, of study for secondary.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments for the board? When do these courses take effect?
These courses will take effect in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. They will show up in the curriculum guide that we will publish in January as the students plan for the coming year.
However, student enrollment is what will guide us, so if we haven't had students, we'll offer it next year. If we don't have enough students, we've at least got it in the books. Um, because these are directly related to the new graduation requirements. And if you recall previously, Dr. Newport talked about a, where we've been working on a STEM Academy. Things like the AP cybersecurity are related to those plans that we are, are getting ready to roll out.
And do we already have teaching staff qualified to teach these or will they have to do certifications or higher now?
We do have staff currently licensed to teach all of these. The two AP courses, the cyber networking and the cybersecurity, will require a week-long training program, but they are licensed currently already. The rest of them, we all have licensed individuals within the corporation currently.
Which schools will these be available in?
We're going to offer them in all three. Depending on which ones we schedule will be determined by student need and student requests.
I just appreciate your work in bringing this to us. It's exciting that we can offer more opportunity for our students and especially in alignment with the new diploma. So, thank you for this work and, and the packet provided. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we do have a motion and a second to approve the new courses of study for secondary education. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 JD, you said aye. I'm sorry, I'm trying to look at the screen.
Yes, aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? And abstain? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, it is, um, our second call for citizen comments and I do have one from Samantha, is it Lambertis? I apologize. Um, on concussion protocol. Welcome this evening.
So, I would like to discuss student, student athletes and concussion protocol within our school corporation. This relates to my daughter's and our experience with hers at Terre Haute South. My daughter sustained a concussion on September seventeenth and the whole experience has been beyond frustrating for us. Since her concussion, administration has told her not to worry about her grades and they would be able to change them at any point in time. Her teachers put in zeros as placeholders, so my honor roll student ended the nine weeks with five Fs and two As. At the end of the grading period, I went on to Skyward to print out all of her missing assignments. We then emailed all of her teachers and asked them to help figure out what she needed to make up. She had thirteen missing quizzes and tests because they would not follow the recommendations from her sports medicine provider. Let's just say the responses I got were not helpful. In fact, I was told by one of her teachers to no longer even email him and to direct all questions to the assistant principal. Her AP chemistry teacher would not allow her to make up her assignments or tests and instead the decision was to make her exempt from everything. So, so much for changing her grades at any time. Her AP pre-cup teacher's response was very negative towards my daughter. We were aware of the number of tests she was missing and the number of days she has missed due to the concussion. Her German III teacher didn't want to adjust anything, including her latest project, because she believed the assignment to be easy and she used them for her German I class. I asked all the teachers that she had missing quizzes and tests with to help us set up a time and date to make them up. No one did this. So, how is the school worried about her falling behind? Instead of helping her succeed, the school seems more intent on leaving her behind. We've worked with the athletic trainer since the concussion occurred. Several notes were turned in from sports medicine as well as the athletic trainer with accommodations that were not followed, except for one teacher, her AP US History teacher. After trying to figure this out on her own, I finally reached out to the Director of Secondary Education. Her first question to me was when was the 504 initiated? This is after a month. It hadn't happened. A meeting was then set up with the Assistant Principal and the Director of Secondary Ed. I asked why the school was not following the recommendations and the response I got was because the provider was just trying to cover his butt. This comment, along with several others made by the Assistant Principal at South over the last three years, were inappropriate. I've been told by her that we don't know what parents care and that we don't know what it was like. All parents care until proven otherwise. I was a high school science teacher and I do understand and know what it's like. The provider was by no means covering his butt. He was providing his professional recommendations to help his patient recover and return to baseline. A 504 was created for my daughter and even though it's protected by the American Disabilities Act, several teachers are still not following it. We are now at the point where the Director of Secondary Ed, as well as the Assistant Principal, are not responding to emails. My husband was able to speak with a different Assistant Principal Friday, who said he would have been overwhelmed with the amount of work she had to make up. Twelve tests as well as other assignments while keeping up with her current studies. Yet they expected a seventeen-year-old to be able to do it while recovering. Vigo County School Corporation needs a better action plan on how to accommodate students with concussions so other children are not left behind like she was by the educational system and defend for themselves. There should also be more accountability for teachers and administrators to reply to parents when they are concerned about their child's education.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, this is the only public comment I have that they have signed up for. Is there anyone else? Seeing none, we are moving on to their information from our superintendent and board members.
And before we do so, we've got Director of our South High School Band, Tim Murphy. We've got our Assistant Director, Todd Norris, and our color guard, Nicole Murphy. If you would like to come up to the microphone and kinda do some introductions. If you want to have the band fall in behind you, the rest of your staff fall in behind you, you're welcome to do so. We are here because our marching band at South High School has the highest placing in the school's history. In Scholastic Class A, they finished fourth in the entire state of Indiana. I also appreciate the delay. They just finished a rehearsal. And because of that, we wanted to give them time for those who were going to come to get here. So, we appreciate your delay. Otherwise, we would have done this at the beginning of the meeting, but we also didn't want to disrupt rehearsal. And with that, it's been a great year with the show. You've been all over. I'll let you pick it up from there.
Alright, so ditto on the nerves, talking in public. I'm not much of a public speaker, but I thought I might have to, so pardon my, uh, my card here. We did have an incredible season. We had several first-place awards throughout the season, uh, including with distinction in music, general effect, and visual at prelims. We were fourth at Scholastic Finals and I'm probably not supposed to say, but I'm gonna whisper it. We were seeded in first place going in at prelims. Not supposed to share that, but it's past, so there you have it. Thank you to the students, staff, and parents for all of your hard work. We couldn't do it without you guys. Thank you to our South Administration, especially Principal Mr. Heron, Assistant Principals, Mrs. Henry, and, uh, Mr. Tanous, and our Athletic Director, Mr. Jarvis. Thank you to the Central Office Administration, Dr. Hemzal, Dr. Newport, Dr. Kaiser, Dr. McDonald, and the School Board of Trustees and, and way too many other people to name. Um, I would just end with, I, hopefully we have added some extra value to our school system and community at a very pivotal time in our history. Uh, thank you for your support of the arts.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Is there any questions from the board?
Yeah, do you practice alone? I see out there, I really do. I mean, it's remarkable how many hours you put in. How many seniors do we have right here? Juniors? Sophomore? Freshman?
What's an eighth grader?
An eighth grader.
Eighth grader. Okay, okay. Well, just again, like, you know, I said earlier to the other organ, or students, you make us proud. And this, just the cool stuff, setting up here, representing you in the state of Indiana, but you do the work. Thank you.
So.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm just curious, um, what is, what is next? Do you have like, is there a fall season and a winter season or how does that work for you guys?
Uh, we'll be going into Winter Guard now. We have the pep band, the jazz band, the indoor percussion, solo ensemble, and concert band contest in April, so it's a busy year throughout.
Doesn't stop.
But now the concentration is more on skill development with the playing of the music. Not necessarily the music and the movement all at the same time and, and so forth, but I've been to lots of band shows, um, lots of them. And what I can say is the growth that I saw in your band from early in the season, when I saw you at the halftime of a football game, compared to what I saw at the last event at Franklin Central High School, when you competed at the state finals, was the growth was incredible. You guys have much to be proud of. The other thing that I will notice is you all looked like you were having a ball, that you just loved the show and had a good time. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Not all the bands I watch look like they're having fun. You all looked like you were having fun. And you guys did a fantastic job and represented our community well.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Thank you.
I'll just add that I spent many a time in marching band, probably too much time, and winter guard and everything, and I just know how much hard work you guys put in. And I was also able to see your show at a, at a halftime at a football game, so were the kiddos, and we were very impressed. They loved the skeleton. Yes, that was their favorite part, so, um, just congratulations and we're all very proud of you. And I also know when you go to competitions, like, one of the best parts is watching the other shows, so do you guys have a favorite show you got to see? I mean, Avon's a good answer.
Did you say Avon? Avon just got the grand national champion this past weekend, so.
So, is your program growing in numbers?
Yeah, it's starting to come back. Uh, we all took a dip around COVID.
Yeah.
And, you know, the following years, just a lot of, a lot of different things to get through, but the numbers are coming back up.
And how many years you been in your position working with the kids?
Um, I've been here twenty, this is my twenty-sixth year.
Wow.
I've been here, uh, two thousand sixteen, I think was my first year.
Congratulations, both of you good leaders. Thank you.
Is there a video queued up that we get to watch from?
There we go.
Katie asked me to remind everybody that, um, this is all copyright, so we can only show you the portion that's public domain.
Skeleton's now for sale for anybody interested, just email me. We need to get it out of our storage. It's your next fundraiser.
How heavy was the skeleton to march around with?
How heavy is it?
How heavy?
How heavy was it?
About forty pounds.
So toddler, wait here. Keely over here.
You probably noticed that as they went behind the props and they came back out, they were in much more comfortable clothing when they came back out than they were before. Um, and I think that's part of the reason why you enjoyed the show, is you start in the state uniforms and as you get rid of those layers, you're in much more comfortable clothing afterwards. Am I correct about that?
Yeah.
So, it's based on The Living Dead, if I remember right.
Yeah, walking, just any zombie movie, yeah.
Yeah.
Also, just my mom will never forgive me, I will shout out the band parents because I know. Also, just my mom will never forgive me, I will shout out the band parents, because I know you guys carted all that stuff all over the state. So I will shout you guys out, because my parents did that for years.
Well, thank you all so much.
You're gonna have to get your picture taken, because that's part of being here.
She's coming up, she's coming up.
Did you guys say a movie or story?
Now, do you guys watch that back and think, me, as the audience, we think it's phenomenal, but do you watch it? And I'd say, oh, why would I have done that? Hey, I read stuff I write, and I'm like, why did I write that? That's terrible.
Get it. Well, thank you guys all for being here and being patient to wait through our business meeting. We are still in that section of comments from the superintendent and board members, and I believe Dr. Himsel may have a short presentation.
Thank you all first for being here. The, what we'd like to do is to, because of what we've, we're very thankful for the county commissioners, the Chamber of Commerce, the mayor, for their support as they continue to advocate for us to have the partnership and the opportunity to have the Oversight Board with the county council. We're very appreciative of the county council taking consideration of that this past Wednesday, and for their approval of moving forward with that. We thought it might be appropriate for us just to revisit what we've talked about back in June, because it's, it's been a long time since we talked about it. So we did present in June 23rd a potential reorganization plan. But before we go into that, you have the clicker for me? So you don't have to guess when I'm switching screens? So we, we continue to try to figure out how to live within our means. We understand that that's important for our community. And to do so with enhancing and expanding our student opportunities, continually trying to improve teaching and learning, and we recognize that we're not perfect. We recognize that we're human, and we recognize there's areas we can get better at. And we appreciate the feedback that helps us do that. We have adopted high reliability schools. High reliability schools is the school improvement framework that basically steals or takes from the business world of the idea of continuous improvement. The idea of the Deming model, the six sigma type of model of continuous improvement, and marries it with what we know effective schools do. And we try to learn from that so that we can get better each day. Sorry about that. And then, of course, we're trying to modernize our facilities and figure out how to live within our means moving forward. The state has changed funding mechanisms for schools frequently since 2008. I think we're in our fourth iteration of property tax reform since 2008. In 2008, the state picked up the funding of the people side of things. The teachers, administrators, secretaries, educational assistants, custodians, guidance counselors, school nurses, and so forth. And so it's, and there's been a lot of changes since 2008, and we're still trying to figure out how to best adapt and make those adjustments. So with that, we're trying to figure out how do we align with the realities of our enrollment? How do we align to the realities of funding that we have available to us to continue preventively maintaining our schools? How do we align with the realities of state funding and the number of employee applicants? We, throughout the entire state, in fact, throughout the entire nation, there is a shortage of applicants, particularly for many of the teaching areas. And then trying to figure out how do we maximize student opportunities and create student opportunities in areas that we should be able to do so as they take it, take it for granted in other communities, and we have to figure out how to do that here. We also know that we have opportunities with our career and technical advancements. But we also know that because we try to basically run three career centers at three different high schools, we don't always have enough students at one building to offer the opportunity. But together, we know we have enough students to do so. We know that we have alternative education needs that extend way beyond what we have classroom space for. We also know that we have waiting lists for pre-K education. Our Deming Early Learning Center has been a huge hit. The expansion that we did at Sarah Scott has been very popular. And we still have a waiting list of more people who would like access to the preschool for our three and four-year-olds. We also know that there are co- and extracurricular activities that if we were to combine, we could offer, but separately, we don't have enough students interested to be able to do so. So when we take these different realities together and we start putting them together, we know that back when North and South first opened, which was back in the 1971-72 school year, so way back in the fall of 1971, Vigo County served over 21,000 students at that particular time. We now know that in our forecasted enrollment for 2930 was less than 12,500. We think that based on recent enrollment over the last three years, that number should actually be possibly closer to 12,000, if not less than 12,000, at our current rate of students by the time we get to the 2930 school year. The reason we choose the 2930 school year as our comparison is because if we were fortunate enough to remodel our high schools or build a new high school, the earliest we would be have it ready to open is in the 2930 school year. So that's why we use it as our point of reference. To put that in more easily understandable terms, we have enough classroom space at North, South, and West combined to serve more than 6,000 students. But in 2930, we are projected to have fewer than 3,200 students in those three high schools combined. To put that into some different terms, in 1971-72, we believe that there were 725 graduates of North High School. We hear stories from different people who have grown up in Terre Haute, who tell us that they have classes that range anywhere from 600, 650, up into the 800, 850 range. We're frequently in the 70s and 80s and even into the early 90s. In the 2930 school year, North and South added together will be less than 600. In fact, it's projected to be 595, which is less than we had basically for the first 20 to 25 years of the existence of North and South at each of the schools, let alone them being combined. So that's part of the realities that we're trying to deal with in terms of coming up with what is the right number of classrooms? And how do we do that in a way so that we're taking care of less space? And we have less space to take care of and preventively maintain. Less space to heat and cool, less space for those types of things. We also know that after, if our buildings were up to the level that we would expect them to be at, and we understand that our buildings do not get in this condition overnight. We understand that this is the accumulation of 40 years' worth of decisions. We can't change what happened in the previous 40 years. What we can do is to take a look at what do we have now and how do we move forward? How do we make sure that our facilities are acceptable for our kids? We understand that they are currently not. If they were up to the level that they should be, we would need approximately $1 million per school to keep it at that level. Every year, we should be doing some maintenance into our, the lighting, the heating, cooling, and ventilation systems, the roofs, the paving, different, the domestic plumbing. That should be something that we invest in every single year. Again, we can't change the past 40 years' worth of decisions, but we know that if we got them up to speed, based on what we know of other school districts and what they spend and how they keep maintaining their buildings, we need about $23 million per year. Unfortunately, when we take into account property tax caps, the transportation budget, technology and equipment, we have about $9 million per year to do $23 million worth of work. Those two numbers don't jive together. And when your $14 million shortfall, year after year after year, you end up in the condition of the buildings that we currently have. It's not the cause of any one person. It's not the cause of any one group of people or boards. It's the accumulation of 40 years' worth of decisions that got us into this situation. What we're trying to do is to figure out, how do we move forward in a way that our buildings are as modernized as they need to be for our kids, so that they can have access to opportunities they have? And we get that $9 million up closer to the 23, and the $23 million down closer to the 9, so that we can live within our means. So in doing so, we looked at what we're doing in other schools across the state and trying to figure out, how are they doing it? What we're finding is, many school districts have elementary schools that serve 600 or 700 students. That does not mean larger class sizes. In fact, I was at a school earlier today that's one of our smaller elementary schools, and they were talking about having 31, 32 in a class. That is not uncommon in our smaller schools. That is unusual in our bigger schools. Schools that have four or five sections of 4th and 5th grade, or have five or six sections of kindergarten and 1st grade, typically have all of their class sizes at or near the class average for the whole district. Our smaller schools that have 200 or 300 or 400 students tend to have some sections where there's two sections and some where there's three sections, because the enrollment fluctuates back and forth, which make it more difficult, and the enrollment bounces. And so it's more likely to have some grade levels where you're below the class size average, and some grade levels where you're well above the class size average. And that is very typical in our smaller elementary schools. We also know that our smaller elementary schools don't have enough kids to offer all the opportunities. We have to bus them to other schools in order to access the high ability or the gifted program, or some special education programs. And we're not able to offer some of our extracurricular activities because there's simply not enough students interested in it to offer the opportunity at that particular school. We're hopeful that by consolidating to 600 or 700 students in an elementary school, we can offer more opportunities that are extracurricular and co-curricular. We can have fewer students that need to be bused to other schools to access programming, which should be easier for parents, especially if they have multiple kids, and they have to make decisions about whether or not they bus one child to a program and keep the other one at a different building and keep them on separate schedules. That's something that we want to avoid. We did the same thing with the middle schools, and we found that 900 to 1,000 students seems to be the sweet spot. As a former assistant principal of a school that had 1,300 students in it, I don't recommend going that big. And what we found is, there's something around the 1100 or 1,200 mark that once you go over that mark, you start to see situations and issues come up in the building that you don't see when they're less than that. And so we want to get to the point where, again, we're more efficient with our staff, but we also are more efficient with the opportunities that we can provide our students, which is the reason why our goal is for 900 to 1,000 students. We also understand geography, and we understand that we have a river that goes through the middle of our community, and there aren't very many bridges that connect each side of the, of the river. And so therefore, consolidation of our two high schools east of the river and keeping a smaller school experience west of the river not only helps us take care of geography, but it also allows for some parent choice in whether or not they want the bigger school experience that offers more opportunities, or the smaller school opportunity that we have at West Vigo. So with those things in mind, if we stay true to the 600 or 700 students at the elementary school, the middle schools at 900 to 1,000, the reality is that we don't need 16 elementary schools, we would only need nine. We don't need five middle schools, we would only need three. And even though we could go to one high school, we think that geography and having the option of the smaller school experience is important, and so therefore, we've settled on two. We also understand that the population between I-70 and Fort Harrison Road up to the north and Third Street out to Fruit Ridge on the east is where the biggest concentration of students happens to be. And in order to meet their needs, we probably need a 10th elementary school and a 4th middle school to help alleviate the fact that the density of the population is there in the center of the town, and not evenly distributed throughout the entire county. So what we are proposing is for Devaney, Fayette, Franklin, Fuquay, Honey Creek, Lost Creek, Otter Creek, Riley, Sarah Scott, and Tarrytown to become elementary schools. And the reason we came up with this is because Tarrytown, Lost Creek, and Riley already have the capability of serving 600 or 700 students. As does Dixie B., but I'll come back to Dixie B. in a little while. We also know that Otter Creek, Sarah Scott, and Honey Creek can serve 600 or 700 students with no substantial changes to their buildings. That gives us six buildings that we don't have to make any changes to dramatically. We will have to make some upgrades to the heating, ventilation, and cooling system. We'll have to make some upgrades to some roofs and some domestic plumbing, which we have already begun the process of, but thanks to the board approving a general obligation bond here recently. But overall, we don't need to add classrooms to those particular buildings. They can already handle 600 or 700 students. So what we're trying to do is to use the resources we already have. Unfortunately, Davis Park and Farrington Grove probably don't have a path to ever being able to serve 600 or 700 students because they're located on 2.8 acres. And unless we want to lose all playgrounds and all parking, they're not viable to even be considered for that. Wabash Elementary School is, does a fantastic job with their population. Unfortunately, it needs to have classrooms added to it to get to 600 or 700. And it happens to be literally built in the middle of a flood zone. We understand that that flood zone does not happen frequently, that it's, but it is in a flood zone. And because of that, we have humidity problems there that we deal with on a regular basis. And that is something that, no matter what we do from a heating, cooling, ventilation system perspective, we've always fought humidity at that particular location, probably because it's in a low spot that has an abnormal amount of moisture that accumulates in that area. We love, absolutely love, all of our elementary schools, and that is no different than for Hoosier Prairie and for Rio Grande. Unfortunately, they are located in areas that are not close to population centers, which means we either have to have the buses that currently stop at Dave, Hoosier Prairie and Rio Grande relocate somewhere else. We believe that since they already go to Otter Creek and Honey Creek, those are viable options for us to consider. We would love to be able to keep them open. Unfortunately, the density of the population does not really give us a clear path to 600 or 700 students in those locations, not to mention that we would need to add classrooms at each of those spots. And the amount of money that would be needed to renovate them would be substantial, as they are quite needy in terms of some of the other needs that they've, that they're in, that they need to have done due to a lack of attention for the last several years. That leaves us with Sugar Grove, Dixie B., Devaney, Fayette, Franklin, and Fuquay, and Consolidated. We are proposing to add on four or five classrooms at Devaney, Fayette, and Franklin, which would allow them to serve 600 or 700 students. They are located in areas that allow us to consolidate with other schools and accommodate their student body. We are gonna plan on converting Consolidated into a middle school, and I'll get to that in just a second. The reason we chose Fuquay over Sugar Grove is simply because if Fuquay, if our enrollment returns and it grows again, Fuquay has the land space to be able to add three or four classrooms to it to get to 600 or 700 as a capacity. Sugar Grove does not. Sugar Grove is also located in a location that can serve as a preschool for both our south end and east end of towns in terms of proximity, as it's kind of in that southeast corner. Dixie B., again, we love the school. It just happens to be located near the Ivy Tech campus and allows us to have a clear path to consolidate our career technical programs, which is where all the dual credit comes from at Ivy Tech. And when we did a deeper dive into some of our students, we had 177 students earn technical certificates or associate's degree from Ivy Tech while they were in high school. And we know that that number can grow if we had better access to Ivy Tech. We know that we have some students who, there may only be seven or eight students interested in a particular program, which makes it preventive for us to offer the program. But if we could access Ivy Tech, those six or seven students could access a program and possibly earn a technical certificate and associate's degree while they're in high school in the area they're interested in, instead of forcing it onto something they're not necessarily interested in. And that's the reason why Dixie B.'s not up there, or Sugar Grove. So with that being said, our middle schools, we are proposing that Woodrow Wilson continue. Again, if their population continues, does grow back and we regain students, Woodrow Wilson to be able to handle that additional population, just like Fuquay can do so on the elementary side. At the same time, if we continue At the same time, if we continue to lose population and we're 12, 15 years down the road and we cannot, the state funding does not, no longer supports that many middle schools, we could consider closing those. I'm hopeful that that never happens. I'm hopeful that we are able to regain population and that state funding comes back to support them. Consolidated, we are proposing to be a middle school, so that the west side has a dedicated middle school with dedicated facilities for middle school students. We understand that we still need to work out some issues regarding their sports program, but this also allows the high school campus to have a dedicated high school campus and regain some space on their campus that they currently don't have for parking, traffic flow, and other opportunities. And from a physical perspective, not from what happens inside the building, but from the physical structure of the building, our Woodrow, our West Vigo Middle School is actually probably our worst-conditioned building and in the most need of renovation, even worse than what we have at North and South. We understand that North and South is beloved by many. We just don't believe that there is enough students to support North and South, and if we're going to close buildings so that we have fewer buildings to take care of and reduce the $23 million per year that we need for preventive maintenance, we need to figure out how to utilize the buildings that we have. We are able to close four elementary schools, possibly up to seven. We're, we're choosing or hopeful that we can repurpose Sugar Grove into a preschool facility, Farrington Grove into a alternative school facility, and Dixie Bee into a career center. But absent that, we would have seven schools, elementaries that we could close. With those repurposes, we could close four. If we're going to build a new building, we believe that it, instead of being middle schools, it should be a high school, and that the high school should have the modern amenities that allow us to teach the physics, the chemistry, the physic, or the biology, the medical sciences, the different technology, cybersecurity, and different things like that that are more modern, and our buildings are simply not equipped to do, and that we take North and South, and once we vacate the buildings and we can actually tear up the main floor, the main terrazzo, to get to the sewer pipes and repair them and replace them and do it the right way, we can rebuild that part of it into viable classrooms for middle school students, which are less specialized than our high school students would need. We understand that there's some people who disagree with that, and we look forward to the oversight committee in talking about these particular ideas, as well as the county commissioners, talking about the funding aspects of things. If we are able to find a partnership, what we are able to do is move quicker and get an opportunity for all of our high school kids to have either some type of modernized facility, whether it's new east of the river, or it's a completely gutted and rebuilt west side with new classrooms on the west side. That also allows us to keep the Green Dome, which I understand is a very important thing as well that has been communicated repeatedly. It allows us to do that. We don't know until we go through this oversight committee if that's possible, but we are hopeful that it is. The county commissioners believe that they have enough existing capacity to help us in a way that does not raise taxes, and we know that we have enough bonding capacity to handle one high school situation without increasing taxes. We would not have enough to do two, though. We would need to raise taxes to do two. But to do one, we have enough bonding capacity with our current tax rate to be able to do that, and the commissioners believe that they may be able to help with the other one with their existing bonding capacity, again, without raising taxes. So that's the reason why we have the oversight committee. This was just to reset and to remind us as to what we were doing and why we were doing it, and we look forward to the conversations that are upcoming, and if there's a way to tweak these plans so that they're better, we're open to that. But what's most important for us is that we have modernized facilities for our kids, that we are able to offer opportunities for our kids that we currently can't offer because we simply don't have cadres of students big enough to offer it, and by consolidating, we're hopeful that we can, so that our students have access to opportunities that other communities simply take for granted. So we thank you for your time. We thank you for all that is going in on that. I believe we've already finished that piece of it. To close out for what I do normally, since the Terre Haute South Band is here, we want to remind them that there is Vigo County Day at the women's basketball game at Indiana State University at Holman Center next Monday, and it is my understanding that you have some people who are going to be playing there at that game. And we also understand that Otter Creek Middle School, under the direction of Chris Williams, will be present to sing the national anthem with their select choir. So, and then I think we're going to have lots of other students at that game is, is it sixth grade day? Sixth grade day is going to be at the Holman Center. We also want to say congratulations to North graduate Harrison Whitaker, who hopefully he kept his streak alive on Jeopardy earlier tonight.
I think he's on right now.
You think it's on right now? So he may be in the process of defending his championship and being able to stay on Jeopardy. I think he originally won on November the 4th.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, sorry, 14th. Terre Haute North Spell Bowl, Spell Bowl team competed in the regional competition, and two students received ribbons for their accomplishments. Rebecca Gallagher received a near-perfect score, and Allison McDonald did receive a perfect score. Their team's score was high enough to qualify them for the state, upcoming state competition. We also want to say congratulations to South Vigo High School student Colby Ellison, as he performed with the Indiana Jazz Educators Association All District Jazz Band. Is he here and present?
Yes.
Congratulations. Many times when I get to this part, the person's not here in the crowd for us to congratulate. Colby was selected out of a pool of applicants from the entire southern part of the state. Again, congratulations. And congratulations to Devaney's robotics team, who competed in their first-ever season, or first-season event of the first LEGO League competition this past week in Indianapolis. Special thanks to the coaches, Whitney Beck and Andrew Winkin.
I used to photo the crowd this weekend when we were slumming.
There you go. Congratulations to Ms. Beck for being honored with the coaches award at the tournament. So we're off to a good start with those extracurricular activities, and that robotics team is an example of, we think that when we consolidate, we could actually have nine or 10 elementary robotics teams instead of one. So that's what we're hoping for.
Ms. Lobella.
I think we may have some insider knowledge about that, so we'll turn it over to, that's all that I have for tonight. Thank you. We hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving and enjoys the upcoming holiday.
I don't have a ton of insider knowledge. One of the robotics team members is hiding over there behind the media table, but he said they had a great week, weekend, and that I believe they were one team away from qualifying for state, so they got really close.
Five points, he told me.
Yeah, they had a great time. So we're just very thankful for that opportunity at Devaney. Do you want me to jump into my comments?
Yes, I'm done.
I just wanted to extend my sincere thanks to the Vigo County Council members, as well as the county commissioners, and all of the elected officials that stood with the school corporation, Board of Trustees, in creating the new oversight board. Also, a special shout-out to all the community members, teachers, the students that came out and spoke. Going to those meetings and hearing all of their stories was just amazing. But the collaboration and leadership that everyone showed just showed, was a shared commitment to the community's future. This formation of the oversight board is an essential first step to how we navigate responsibility to, responsibly to fund a new high school without placing major tax burden on our property owners. This facilities plan is not only comprehensive, but it's thoughtful and truly transformative. It will have a lasting positive impact on our students, our educators, and our entire community. And on a personal note, as a mother of four kids currently in our elementary schools, I feel this work deeply. My students, my kids and all of our kids will see the fruits of this oversight board's efforts, and I'm generally excited for our students to learn in future-ready, in a future-ready school that gives them every opportunity to thrive. And I'm grateful for the partnership shown throughout this process, and I'm honored and proud to serve as a member of the Board of Trustees. So I want to thank you all for being up here with me, and I look forward to continuing our important work together for the benefit of our community's future. So thank you.
Any other comments from board?
Well, you always look at me, but yeah. Just short and sweet. We're going in the right direction for this community, but as a school board member, I'm excited for our future. We know the condition of these buildings. You've all been through it, and hopefully you can look back in a few years and remember this meeting and where we're moving to. But I'm proud to serve on this board, too. Thank you.
There's not much more I can add to Mrs. Lobella's comments. We normally don't have this many students here in the, in the audience at the end of a meeting, so thank you guys for hanging with us. And I am sure you know several classmates that spoke at the county council meeting, and for you being here this evening and other classmates, it is hard to get up in front of people, of leaders of the community, and speak. And so I'm just proud of you. I hope you continue to advocate, you continue to use your voices in the way in which you fight for something you feel very passionate about, continuing to share your stories and reach out to us. So I'm proud to be a part of this board, and I think we have a lot of really good work to do, and I think the main focus is we are trying to explore options to not raise your property taxes. And I think that needs to always be front and center, that we are looking and doing that hard work to do that for you as a taxpayer. So, thank you, everyone, and just a reminder that our future meeting is Monday, December 15th, here in this room at 6:00 PM. Please come back if you would like to, but again, enjoy your Thanksgiving holiday and be safe out there. I will take a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, JD.
We are.